Pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA, ten, four through ten, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, the Board Office, the schools, and on Cable Vision Channel 118, and Verizon FiOS Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the township clerk. This special meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, July 22, 2025. The Board will take formal action on the appointment of the interim superintendent and other agenda items. Mr. Waddell?
The Old Bridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the board, have the right to record public board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that the actor recording does not interfere with the business of this public board meeting. Therefore, the board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual, and in no manner represents the official record of this board. The board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Roll call, please.
Done.
Here.
Francisco.
Here.
Giordano.
Here.
Jodri.
Here.
Mizon.
Here.
Slade.
Here.
Solakowski.
Here.
Venkatesan.
He just walked in. He's good.
He's here. And Dantuno.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can everyone stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance. Good evening. Thank you all for coming. I think we don't have any progress towards goals today with the exception of, actually, you know what, for the progress towards goals, I'm going to tell everyone how we got to the point that we are tonight. So, for the interim process, we did have 15 resumes submitted, which was a two-hour Zoom meeting to narrow it down to interviews. The board had two four-hour nights to conduct seven interviews and discussion to choose the interim process. For the superintendent search that has been going on as well, we had six executive search firms that applied to be our search firm for our superintendent. We interviewed one in a one-hour meeting. The update from the search firm as of now is there are 15 applications in the pipeline. The district and the firm are collaborating on the focus group schedules. There should be at least 13 different focus groups. All board members have been interviewed, and there will be three public sessions totaling in 24 different focus slots for the public and staff and the community to have say in who our final superintendent is. The in-person community sessions will be, in-person is scheduled for Thursday, tentatively scheduled for Thursday, September 11, with virtual nights the week of the 15th and the week of the 25th. So those dates will be forthcoming. The district is also working on a webpage to keep the public and the community informed as far as the superintendent's search. The board told the executive search firm that we would like to get this moving quickly, and the board has agreed with a goal of trying to make our vote on our final superintendent at the October 28 meeting. So, this superintendent, the interim superintendent, we're hoping is just a few months. So that is my progress towards goals and things like that. Does any of the board want to add anything to that? Okay. Do we have any correspondence?
No correspondence received.
Okay. So, hearing of the residents on the agenda item. I'll open the mic. Seeing none, we'll close the public session. Can I have a motion for certificated personnel, item one and two?
Mizon will motion.
George, your second.
Any discussion? Okay. Roll call, please.
Done.
No vote abstention.
Francisco.
Yes.
Giordano.
Yes.
Jodri.
Yes.
Mizon.
Yes.
Slade.
Yes.
Solakowski.
Yes.
Venkatesan.
Yes.
Dantuno.
Yes.
Resolutions one and two for certificated personnel passes.
Okay. So with that, he's Dr., right? Dr. Bragan will be our interim superintendent starting September 1st. So we welcome Dr. Bragan to the district. Hearing of residents on any district item. We will open the mic once again. Now. Dr. Bragan. Bernie Bragan. Bernard Bragan. There will be a sign-in, but you can speak first and then sign in.
There's no binder here.
It might not be there. It's okay.
My name is Brooke Richards Patterson. I just wanted to congratulate Dr. Bragan and welcome him, and wish Mr. Sidiya well. Could you just maybe go over a little bit of his background? That was it. Good job. I'm happy everybody came to unanimous decision, by the way.
Just for clarification, it wasn't necessarily unanimous, but it was board consensus. I don't have his information on me. Does anyone have it on them? Go ahead.
So, Dr. Bragan has been in education for about 30 years. He has been a superintendent in the local area. He was assistant soup and soup in Haslett Township just south of here. He has been involved in the tri-district, Atlantic Highlands, Henry Hudson and Highlands. He's been involved in the Monmouth Ocean Ed Services Commission, and he was in Edison for a couple of years before relocating to Virginia. He is now relocating back, and he will start, he will be here somewhat, working with Dr. Hooker, Dr. Tu, and Mr. Waddell in the coming weeks. He will officially start on September 1st, but he will be here a little bit between now and then in his Virginia school district where he's employed right now. Their administrative council meeting is today and tomorrow, so tonight was impossible for him. The board will be meeting with him briefly in executive session shortly, but he is a fully qualified candidate, and the board consensus was reached after the process that Mr. Dantuno described.
Thank you. All right. Any other residents? Then I'm going to close the mic. For the board, any old business.
Madam President.
Go for it.
So, it's obvious, everyone knows that I was conflicted out of this process, and I do not know anything about what transpired over the last three months with the Board of Education's search for an interim or a permanent superintendent. However, I do have some reservations, and as a board member here, I have the right to express my concerns and my opinion. Yes, unfortunately, my wife is an educator in this district, and I was conflicted out, and I have had no contact with any board members or anyone to discuss my concerns and my reservations. Obviously, I have no issue with Dr. Bragan. I think that, you know, he comes with a very good resume to be an interim for four and a half months. However, that's where my reservation begins, is why did this board have to choose someone outside the district to be the steward for four and a half months when we have extremely qualified people within our ranks who understand our school system, who have already learned and understand how we do things? To bring someone in for four and a half months, in my opinion, doesn't make sense, because there's going to be a large learning curve here for that person to get acclimated. And I just want to know exactly what my fellow board members were thinking to exclude the six or seven, or maybe four or five qualified candidates who applied from within the district. We all know who they were. I know them based upon rumor in the district and speaking with them and just asking, you know, you know, how things were going. And quite frankly, you know, I am a little perturbed, and I think I'm owed an explanation, and I think also the public and the staff is owed an explanation on why four and a half months we bring an interim in, and that there was no qualified people within our district. That's troubling to me, because you know what? I think he may be a wonderful candidate. I think he may do a wonderful job for four and a half months, but it's going to take two and a half months to get up to speed on how we do things. And yes, luckily, we have Dr. Hokie here who's been in the district for 10-plus years and who understands how we do things, and I think that he's going to be leaning on her to get things done. So I don't know the rationale, and I would like to know the rationale for my fellow board members on why four and a half months we couldn't pick someone from within. And if this board is going to consider an internal candidate for the position, for permanent, I think that our history and for our township and for our system, I think that it will be a very important process to consider highly internal candidates for the permanent position. However, based upon what I'm seeing here tonight, I don't think that's the process that's going to move forward, because if we felt that four and a half months to bring an interim in, that is an indicator that there's going to be really no consideration for an internal candidate, as far as I'm concerned. And that's troubling, because this district has had great history with bringing people through the ranks and who have been exceptional leaders, exceptional stewards. And for the last 20 years, we've had exceptional stewards, leaders, who came up through the ranks. And I believe that the process should have been that, you know what, there should have been one of the applicants from within, or we have wonderful assistant superintendents here who could have been very easily acclimated and implemented and put into the position as interim, and brought someone up from within the ranks who applied for the interim to get some learning curve experience. Very important. I can't see the board going out and then bringing in a principal in and making them a superintendent without having no central administration background. So I would like to know an explanation. If the president wants to explain to me and the public, all well and good. If another board member wants to pick up the pieces and explain the rationale for four and a half months, I think that the public and the staff of the Old Bridge Public Schools should understand. So that's where I'm going to leave it, and if I'm out of line, I know Mr. Parton would have already interjected himself to tell me to close my mouth. However, I am entitled to speak my mind after the vote. I didn't ask about, you know, specifics of the process, but I'm asking for generalities which I want to be shared with the public. Thank you.
A few things that I can clarify. There were three candidates that applied, not four or five. I'm not going to speak for other board members as far as how they felt with how those interviews went. As far as the permanent position, the search firm was instructed that all internal and external candidates are to be treated the same. There is no special treatment being given to internal candidates or any special obstacles that internal candidates have to be given. Everyone is given the same treatment, and all, for the permanent position, all candidates or all people coming in are given the exact same level playing field. So the, the search firm will, has, that's why they're coming to the public and to the staff and things like that, to say, what do you guys want out of a superintendent? What qualities are you looking for? Things like that. They're going to compile that, they're going to go through all of the candidates that applied, and being what the public, what the staff, what the board want out of their candidate, they will present the slate. Now, the board will get a list of every person that applied for the permanent position, but they're going to present a slate of who they think fits that, those qualifications the most. The board has already scheduled two full Saturdays, eight to four, to conduct interviews for the slated position, to go through that process, but we don't know who's coming in on that slate until the search firm finishes their process. But as far as how people felt and how they voted, that's why, it was no offense to Ms. Richards, I wanted, you know, it wasn't a unanimous decision. There were people with multiple votes as far as who the candidate would be, so I'm not going to speak for other people on that part.
Madam President, I appreciate the explanation, but my question wasn't answered. My question was, why did we choose someone for four and a half months who really has no issue or any kind of background with our district, and is going to take that person some time to get up to speed? So, in my estimation, I'm not, I have nothing against this candidate or the new superintendent.
No, I get that. I was giving my fellow board members a chance to answer for themselves.
But for four and a half months, I think that there is a transition period.
Rich, I was giving other board members a chance to answer.
I, okay, but I didn't see any other board member trying to jump in.
Well, you kind of did before anyone.
Okay, very, very, very good. Thank you.
Rich, I'll jump in. Not to discount any of the qualifications of any of the candidates, they're all qualified. The board actually had to get reeled in during those meetings to focus on the job at hand, which is an interim. You know, our main focus, the end game is for the permanent, that's where our main, main focus is going to be, but you had to have somebody who had superintendent experience, whether it be an interim, there are some professional interims that are out there. So, it's not that we discounted other internals or other candidates, but we actually, when we all got reeled in, was that it's really just an interim position for a few months. And I don't even want to discount what the interim does, but just watching the shot until, you know, we get a permanent position. I mean, the assistant superintendents are here to help, but it's a lot of load for a big district. So, once we all regained that, we realized, okay, not to say the interim's not an important spot, but we needed somebody with superintendent experience, interim. This guy has interim experience as well. He has qualifications. Doesn't mean that the other, some internals didn't have the qualifications, but our main focus is the big picture down the road, the permanent spot. So, that's why, it wasn't an easy decision, but we just had to find somebody short-term, like Jen said. December, October 28th, we're going to make our decision for the permanent, so it's July, you know, I don't think, it's, it's a, it's that big of a deal for that aspect. The bigger deal is, while we hired a firm, is to get a long-term, full-time position, and that we're taking super serious, two Saturdays that were showing up from eight to four. So, so it's, again, it wasn't easy, but don't think that we discounted any of the qualifiers that were in for the interview.
I'd like to add, Jay, to what you exactly said, just to be a little bit more prescriptive about the whole process, since, you know, it's a good question, done, it's a very valid question, everybody should know about this. We had a set of questions, right? We all came together, drafted a set of questions, probably 10, 15 questions, right? We asked the same questions in the interview process across all the candidates, both internal and external, and each of us put kind of a metrics. As you were asking, right, I went back to my notes, and I was like trying to refer the same set of questions, oh, everybody answered. And yes, there is a reason, of course, why, you know, we chose this candidate. To me, again, you know, from my perspective, right, Mr. Bernard Bragan, or Dr. Bernard Bragan, has managed school sizes much more bigger than Old Bridge, right, first of all? And he has had practical experience in the districting and of managing similar budgets or much higher budgets. If you look at it, some of these aspects are the immediate needs of the district, even if it is the next four months. Next four months is so critical for everyone. Whenever I meet people in the community, as I'm going around in the summer, everybody asks, what happened to taxes? Right? We cannot be living and breathing this kind of taxes, including myself. I might move out. Some of you might move out. We cannot be living in a township by increasing taxes like this. Even if it is an interim, it is treated equally as a strategic position. If things go south, yes, that superintendent or the interim superintendent is accountable, right? So in my opinion, I treat this candidate and this position as equal applicable as a superintendent to be in charge. So these are some of the aspects why, you know, in my opinion, I voted for the interim. And the few other things are, it comes with a much, it comes with a much more experienced leadership qualities, right? There is something which we need to guide all of us along. I'm not trying to compare one or the other in this district, including myself or anybody else. We all, including yourself or some of us, we all bring different perspectives and different backgrounds and experiences to the table, and so is that person whom we have chosen. He also comes with much more senior and much-needed immediate experience, and that was the reason, you know, which we, I voted for at least, and probably now some of us came to consensus. Thank you.
And I would also like to add, there was a concern within the board that if someone in central administration was moved up to the interim, and then they were not the superintendent permanently, that they would have a difficult time going back to the position they were in, and we could possibly lose them as we would have their position already replaced in whatever position they were in before they became the interim. Is that fair, Mr. Parton?
Yes.
I do appreciate, you know, some more candor and some more information. Thank you to my colleagues for explaining, and there's validity to what you said, I get it, but I just want to make sure that the public and staff understands the rationale. And I have one final question, and that question is, is this interim going to apply for the permanent position?
That's up to him, Mr. Dun. We do not know that yet. Applications are out. Applications, some are being processed, but the deadline is not for months before the, the final opportunity to submit those applications.
So of the 15 applications that the search firm has received, he's not one of them at this point?
They didn't give us a list of who's already, because they won't tell us as it's coming in. They have to see from the public, what, and the staff and everything, what we want as candidate, but we won't get the list until the deadline's closed. Just clarifying. All right, go ahead.
As of right now, we, we are hired, we have hired HYA as the search firm. So, HYA, as soon as they were hired, they put out a preliminary job posting on their website as far as this superintendent position is open for Old Bridge Township Board of Education. So, based on that opening, and they have thousands and maybe hundreds of thousands of hits on their website, you know, they see anyone that is willing to just apply for Old Bridge, they're, they're getting that job application, and they're submitting their, their documents. The real focus now, over the next couple of months, which I've started on meetings with different focus groups and eventually the community, will be, there is going to be community events or focus group events in which a leadership profile is ultimately built. Essentially, HYA will be asking members of the community, members of the different focus groups, of what they think the strengths of the district are, what they think the weaknesses are, essentially like a SWOT analysis, opportunities, threats. Essentially, like a SWOT analysis, opportunities, threats, you know. So, they want to be able to accumulate all the responses from whether a group of teachers, a group of power professionals, a group of administrators, a group of board members, or the community at large. They want to take all the responses they get at these meetings and build what's called a leadership profile. Then, when that leadership profile is created, it gets posted even more, and it gives exactly what we as a district are looking for in a candidate. Then, someone that didn't submit an application or a submittal already, one of those 15 people, they read that profile and say, maybe they were teetering back and forth of, do I want to go for that job or not? They read that profile and say, you know what? That really matches me as a professional, as a person. I really want to apply. Or there's some people that are going to read that profile and say, hmm, maybe I'm not ready to commit and go to the next level. I'm still, you know, need some more experience or something. Or, you know, my values don't match the values of Old Bridge. So that is what we are building over the next few weeks, over the next couple of months, a leadership profile, which will then be posted by HYA and allow additional candidates to then read that profile and submit again. So until that process is done, we will not know which 15, we don't know what 15 candidates have submitted until we get further along in this process, then we get the full list. And again, this board asked that question. We want to be able to see every single submittal, submission of a candidate that was interested. So, you know, some different search firms can say, oh, we're going to give you the best 10. This board did not want that. They want to be able to see and identify and vet all, every candidate. They just want to be able to see and know who's in the pool. So, that is the biggest update I can give. We don't know those 15 people. We don't know if Dr. Bragan will apply ultimately as his decision if he wants the permanent position, but that's where we stand as of right now.
So, I've been part of the superintendent search prior. I was able to participate back when Dr. Brennan was here. Unfortunately for me, the laws have changed, and I was excluded this time around. I know it was 13 years ago, but 13 years ago was a long time ago. And I know that, you know, we had asked Dr. Brennan a question as being a interim, if he would be interested in the permanent search. And you cannot tell me that you did not ask this gentleman, Dr. Bragan, that would he be interested in the permanent position? Because that's a very critical question the board's going to ask, especially when you do things paralleling one another. So, my question is, was that question asked to him? And what was his response? And if no one wants to respond, that's fine. You want to keep that private, that's fine as well.
Yeah, we're not going to tell that publicly at this point, Rich. It's
Very well.
It's a completely legitimate question, but it's a personnel issue, and big decisions are being made by individuals and by the board. So at this point, we can't talk about that publicly.
I respect that, Mr. Parton, but I just want transparency. And I want to make sure that everything is on the table so the public and staff know what's going on. And I guess that answered my question. Thank you, Mr. Parton. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Vice President and board members for answering my concerns. I appreciate it very much.
Any other old business? Any new business? I do have new business. I have a question for David, or Mr. Riddell, and I think Dr. Tuie was, I kind of prepped him for this question. So, we saw the governor had signed paperwork regarding like kindergarten and preschool, you know, being mandated. Now, we already have full-day kindergarten, so we're a step ahead on that. But what does that possibly, and I know there's no definites and nobody knows what's going on with money, but what's that possibly mean for funding? Or are the future?
So, a couple of things. Number one, since we already have full-day kindergarten, most likely we're not going to get an increase in student, state aid for that program. If it was the will of the board to review our preschool application and move forward with that, then that's something that we can continue to do. I could dust off the presentation from three years ago, present it, and see if we do actually get the funds and if it would be, again, the will of the board to move forward with that program. That being said, when it was discussed three years ago, some of the concerns that were raised included the impact on special education classes, the staff, and having the amount of staff necessary, and also the facilities. You know, as of right now, our preschool program is housed at Glenn School. Next year, we're going to have nine classes at Glenn and five classes at Southwood for a total of 14 classes. You know, the facility at this point is kind of maxed out. So, if we are to move to that program, we'd have to look at all options to have an actual building or some sort of facility for our preschool program. The amount of money per student didn't necessarily cover the transportation, which was our big issue, and some of the issues that districts are actually facing now with their current preschool programs where they submitted with the grant. So, I guess to be determined in terms of increased funding for preschool. But the amount of money necessary to transport the students, both gen ed and special ed, to the schools was pretty large when it came towards that component of the grant itself.
I think it was like $400,000, wasn't it?
I think it was $800,000.
Oh, 400 for the year and then eight for the following year.
I have a question. So, Dr. Tuie, you're still referring to the grant that we talked about, correct?
There's two parts to this. The first part is the grant, which is still active, and we can apply for that. But it's my understanding that Governor Murphy put into effect the mandating a full-day kindergarten district-wide. There's only like 10 or 12 districts that don't have that, and then preschool was
I was talking about preschool.
Yeah, it was placed on the table as an option, but I don't know if that's actually going to come to fruition. I don't know if Governor Murphy knows how many preschool teachers are actually out there. There's not many. But if there's anyone on the board who wants to work again in an elementary setting or preschool, they're more than welcome to.
So though, if we talked about applying for the grant again, we'd still be under the same constraints of, A, having to reduce services to some special education students, and B, not requiring special education students to be taught by special education teachers. Would that still be true? Because that's why I voted no for it the first time.
We would have to reevaluate the provision of related services, which was originally proposed as in a push-in model. If we were able to have a larger building or a different facility, it's a possibility that we'd be able to continue the pull-out model as well as the push-in, which is what the state is actually recommending. However, your second statement is true, that the model for the state is 10 students, 10 general education students, which we would have now as tuition-based students, and five students who are identified as needing special education-related services for 15 total students. But the state does not mandate that that preschool teacher has a special education certification. What it does mandate is that there is a master teacher who goes into the classroom and provides strategies for that teacher to facilitate the instruction for those students who have an IEP. And therefore, again, that was one of the reasons why the board was not in agreement to that three years ago.
Thank you. Okay, so I misunderstood, I guess, the bill. So they're just right now encouraging the preschool. They're not mandating the preschool just yet?
The, the full-day kindergarten, the two bills, the kindergarten portion is now mandated. Every district, and again, I think there's only 10 or so, has to have full-day kindergarten in place by 2030. The difference with the pre-K is that essentially what the governor did is making, he is looking to mandate that the grant is available.
Oh, okay. I misunderstood the funding.
He needs to, the expansion of funding, and they're trying to get more funds to it, but they, in order to expand those programs statewide, he's putting a mandate or attempting to put the mandate in that the grant is available for the future years to come.
I was hoping that the mandates of the grant were getting loosened so that we could, okay. Thank you for that clarification. Any other new business by the board? All right. We thank everyone for coming out. I hope everyone enjoys the rest of the summer and, you know, the heat wave kind of stays away for a little while and we can enjoy the nice sunny days. All right. Motion to go in executive session?
Don't make a motion.
Mazon will second.
All right. Thank you.
All in favor? All right, we're going to exec.
We have to go to the other building?
We're going to the conference room, right?
We were going to go to the conference.
He's on Zoom, so we have to go to the conference room. Hey, Lil, Lily, I have to go to the conference room, so don't move the car yet.